All right, 6:25. I will call to order a meeting of the Licensing Board. We recognize a quorum with Alderman Butchlick, myself, and Alderman Zingshaim here for the Licensing Board. Our first item of business is approval of the Licensing Board minutes from August 4th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. We've got three licenses to consider tonight. Lisa, can you confirm that everything's in order with these applications?
Yes, I can.
Looks good. All right. Our first is a new Class A combo license for 2025-2026.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries. Our next is a new cigarette, tobacco, and electronic vape license for 25-26. I will motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim. Any questions, comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Our next is a new amusement device license for Meyer 2025-2026.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Butchlick. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries, and our Licensing Board is adjourned.
I would like to call the order of Board of Public Works. We have four items on the agenda. Item number one would be the approval of the minutes from August 4th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Are there any corrections or deletions or additions? There are none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All? Motion carried. Item number two, Stormwater Maintenance Agreement, SWMP 6-87, Amendment Number One. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. This is one of those agreements that we come up with every time we approve a new stormwater management permit. This is a requirement of our MS4 permit that we have with the DNR. Any new stormwater management permit, when there are facilities for stormwater management, we need to have an agreement with the property owner to ensure that the improvements are built to the design and that they will be maintained in the future to continue functioning as intended. So this one is for a project of a building addition and some paved area, driveway, parking, et cetera, at 411 North River Road. The original stormwater management plan was not implemented properly, but with this improvement to the property, a new permit or an amendment to the permit was issued after the property owner team had a design for a new stormwater management feature, including a biofilter basin with 18 inches of engineered soil. So we would recommend that the board and council approve this agreement.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Schmidt, second. Alderwoman Sizer. Any questions for Max? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number three, Stormwater Maintenance Agreement, SWMP 17-05, Amendment Number Two.
Thank you. This is a similar situation where the property for Good Shepherd on Decora Road at the corner of Decora in Indiana, is undergoing improvements, new improvement. They are changing their stormwater management plan, replacing an existing pond with a new stormwater storage and treatment underground device. And with the change of facility, we have a new agreement for the maintenance of this new best management practice for this property. So again, we recommend approval of the agreement.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Berquist, second. Alderwoman Sizer. Any questions for Max on this one? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number four, Stormwater Maintenance Agreement, SWMP 17-10, Amendment Number One.
Thank you again. So this agreement is similar to the previous one, is for Vigil Wear along Schmidt Road. The project is for the reconstruction of a south parking lot, driveway, and perimeter pavement. Overall, the property will have less paved area with this improvement. They do have to comply with total suspended solid removal, and therefore, they have to install some facility for that, and we need an agreement to make sure that, like I said before, it will be maintained over the years. And after our review, we recommend the approval of this agreement as well.
Okay, motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Schmidt, and second. Alderwoman Sizer. Are there any questions for Max on this one? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
Seeing no further business before the Board of Public Works, adjourned as chair.
I call to order a meeting of the Finance Committee. We have three agenda items this evening. The first one is the approval of the regular meetings, regular meeting minutes from August 4th. A motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Berquist, and second by Alderman Zingshaim. Any corrections, additions, deletions? There being none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Our next item is Resolution Number 27, to accept donations to the Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Department. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. This evening, we have a very impressive list of community donations that we would like to present to the council and the community. The first donation of $5,000 is donated by Westbury Bank Charitable Foundation for the Regner Beach House renovations. This is the fifth and final installment of their $25,000 gift towards that project. The next donation of $1,250, donated by Synergy Ops for sponsorship of the 2025 Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids. The next donation of $1,650 was donated by Gears Incorporated. These are proceeds from the Regner Beach House Beer Garden for May 30th and 31st. As a reminder, our Gears organization is our Viking organization that supports the South of Glacier, Bull Hills, and the new trails in Regner Park. We very much appreciate their efforts. Not only did we receive the financial donation, but many others of volunteer work from that group. The next donation of $400 donated by the West Bend Disc Golf Club for the Riverside Park Disc Golf Course. The next donation of $5,100 is donated by the West Bend Friends of Parks and Recreation for Youth Recreation Program and Staff T-shirts. And also, we have several in-kind donations in support of the 2025 Dirty Ninja Mud Run. The first in-kind donation was from the West Bend Friends of Park and Recreation for a value of $4,000. They helped make 2,000 Ninja Mud Run meals the day of the Dirty Ninja Mud Run. Also, KBS for $35 for screen printing charge for our T-shirts. PLM, they've been an annual sponsor of the Mud Run. They provide us the water bottles with a value of $1,500. Sundex of West Bend, a value of $250 for event bags. It's kind of nice to have those bags for all the good stuff for the kids, and the dirty clothes go inside the bags at the end of the event, so mom and dad can ship them on home. Also, Seraphine, a value of $250 for printing sponsor signs and directional signs and things like that for the Mud Run. Thank you to all of these organizations that we're talking about this evening that continue to support our community. These donations help make West Bend an exciting community to live, work, and enjoy life. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion. Thank you, Alderwoman Sizer. Second. And Alderman Zingshaim, I appreciate that. Any questions or comments for Mike on these donations? I will simply add and echo your comments, Mike, that this community is not what this community is without sponsors, generous sponsors throughout our community who make things like the Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids a tremendous success year over year that keeps people coming back to this community and gives them a really, really positive view of everything that we are doing here. So again, a thank you to all those generous donors. We've got a motion, a second. All those in favor of accepting, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any... That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our third agenda item this evening is Resolution Number 28, addressing rain and flood emergency response. Ian, I'll turn it over to you.
Yep. So this covers two different things. The initial one, that was part of the original packet, addressed the permit fees for essentially repairs for storm damages. We want to make sure that, you know, proper permitting happens, and we want to make sure that we ease the burden of any repairs that are going to happen. So there in number two, you can see there's very specific provisions, and that was part of the original resolution. We added in a general declaration of emergency, just to make sure that we have that in place to recoup any funds if it's needed, as those may or may not become available. So for the permits, the goal is, they have to report the damage through either the 2-1-1 or the city's Survey 1-2-3 process. The damage needs to be reported before August 29th, so the goal is to get that reported right away. That's an important function for us because we need to have those damage numbers to facilitate the emergency response declarations, or the emergency declarations and hopefully access funds. Those are those, the amount of funds that the city and the county and the region get depend largely on the degree of the disaster, so it's very important to have that information. Permit fees are going to be waived only on work that was previously permitted, so it's not an opportunity to suddenly get a permit for the basement remodel somebody did without permits years ago. And then permit applications have to be submitted on or before March 1st. The city had already waived late permit fees and waived double damages. We could do that as a discretionary act. These are because they're required by ordinance, we need a resolution. Oh, and then the last, we just have, we have language that allows the city staff to use reasonable discretion. So obviously, we want the damage reported by August 29th. If it's something that can't be discovered until later in the year, there's still discretion to be able to respond to that.
Thank you very much for that explanation, Ian. Appreciate that. Any comments or questions for Ian on this topic first?
I just have a question. Is it possible that we make sure that this gets out to the public, like the city put it on their website, so that this information does get out, that the public are aware that they are able to get these permits that are not going to be a fee for it? I think that's important, that we make sure everybody is aware of that.
Absolutely. No problem at all. We'll make sure to work with our communications team to publicize these efforts. Certainly.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you very much, Alderman Butchlick.
Second.
And Alderman Berquist, appreciate the second. Any additional questions or comments? There being none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. There being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as chair.
Good evening. It's Monday, August 18th, and this is a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. More than 24 hours in advance of tonight's meeting. Notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin state statutes. Clerk, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We recognize a full quorum of our council here tonight. We have Alderman Sparts and Alderman Ingle King calling into tonight's meeting. Can you guys both just say hello so that I know you can hear me?
Hello, I'm Sparts.
Is Rhett logged in? Okay. He's logged in. All right. When we vote, I'll give him time to vote, and hopefully he's there. Special welcome to the new face up here on the podium. This is Jesse Tyes. He's our new city administrator. He is starting week number two. Came in Monday morning last week. It was one heck of a week, and hit the ground running, and we're excited to have him here. Before we start tonight's meeting, we had a lot of residents affected by some historic flooding last weekend, as you all know, and it could have been even some of you here in the room. And I guess I'd just like to take a moment of silence, and maybe if you choose to say a prayer for our fellow neighbors and citizens, do what you will, but I just want to take a moment of silence and think about the people that were affected here in our community. Thank you. All right. Our first item of business is approval of our regular meeting minutes held on August 4th, 2025.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Schmidt. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear you, Sparts.
Aye.
Okay. Poor Rhett. Any opposed? That motion carries. Mike, I'll invite you to the podium. We've got some neat recognition tonight from some citizens who have put a lot of time, money, effort, blood, sweat, and tears into their residences and into their businesses. Being recognized tonight for the Roots and Branches Beautification Awards. And so, Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, my name is Mike Faulkner. I'm representing Roots and Branches. One of the many things that Roots and Branches is involved in, in the city of West Bend, is our Roots and Branches Beautification Award. And each year, we have volunteers that travel every single street in the city within each Aldermanic district. I would say some of the judges are here this evening, and a number of judges have been with us at least eight years. And they always say if you've, because we rotate the district each year or so, those that have been here for eight years will have been on every single street in the city of West Bend. Because within the district, they're assigned, they travel along every single street in that district, just looking, admiring the different yards, the front yards in the city. So that's the task they're assigned with, and as you know, there's a lot of beautiful yards in the city of West Bend. So that's how the Roots and Branches Beautification Award goes. So I'd like to thank those 16 volunteers that do this every year, and without them, obviously, we couldn't do this. So this year, they again provided the time, and we're pleased to have so many of the recipients with us here this evening, both with the residential awards and the business awards. So what I'm going to do is introduce by each district, and if you recipients would please come up over by that area over by the side over here. And Aldermen have the plaques that they will present to you, and Lisa Kitsky, our director for Roots and Branches, will be taking your picture. So congratulations, and thank you for all the work that you've done to make your yards look so nice. All right? So District One is David and Jennifer Hines, Alderman John Butchlick. District Two, Ron and Cheryl Mitchell, and pinch hitting tonight will be our new city administrator, Jesse Tyes. District Five, Susan Cornman. I'm not sure if Susan snuck in or not. I do not think Susan is here, but we'll give her a round of applause. Alderwoman Mary Best Sizer, who did not want her picture taken by herself with the District Six, Kirk and Julie Larson, again Jesse Tyes, pinch hitting for John Sparts. So again, congratulations to all eight of these district recipients. On the evening, Joel Anger, Mayor Anger and I go around and put up the signs, and we both say it's one of our favorite evenings of the year to go around to all the different places and see all the yards, and they were all so beautiful this year, and all the different things that people do was a very, very special evening, a lot of fun that we do to do that. So the other half of this is we recognize some businesses in West Bend each year that we feel have gone above and beyond in how nice they look. And the three businesses we're going to recognize this evening, if you'll come up and take a picture with the mayor. We have a sort of a large, medium, and smaller buildings, and we had a number of nominations, and these places, take a drive-by if you haven't, and take a look at these. They're a very, very nice job. So the first one, the larger building, is Forte Bank. And the next one we would like to recognize is Hanson and Company Real Estate. Okay, if you have one last hand for all of the recipients, they've done a beautiful job to beautify West Bend. And I thank the council for giving us the opportunity to do this and recognize these people. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Roots and Branches. And like I told you all when we were standing outside there, it's just so wonderful, the amount of time and effort and energy that you put in to making West Bend beautiful. Thank you, Roots and Branches. That is really, their purpose is to beautify our city. They've got a board of volunteers, Lisa, their executive director, and a whole bunch of other volunteers that help beautify our city. My wife and I had dinner, I think it was the very next night, after Mike and I went out, and I said, hey, you know, we're going to go check out the kaleidoscope over at this house and Jane's house. My wife and I walk down Seventh every day, but Jane's in a cul-de-sac, and so, of course, the next day, I said, we've got to go up the cul-de-sac, and I got to show you this place. So anyway, there are addresses here. I'm not going to publicly tell everyone your addresses, but go check them all out because they're wonderful. And again, thank you very, very much, and congratulations. This is the point in time where if you'd like to stay, you're more than welcome to, but otherwise, have a great night. I'd like to just direct your attention to a proclamation that's in your packet. I'm not going to read the full thing here, but the first week in September, we like to recognize Payroll Week in the city, and we obviously have people here in this building who work in payroll, but there are a lot of people around our community who work in payroll. And so, the first week of September, we've written a proclamation recognizing Payroll Week. This is through payroll, nationwide payroll organization, but a statistic I wanted to just read because it's interesting. Payroll departments collectively spend more than $2.4 trillion annually, complying with a bunch of federal and state wage tax laws and things like that. But anyway, important role of payroll for anybody that's ever had a job, the payroll department is pretty darn important, and so just recognizing that, and again, that's in your packet tonight. We'll move on to our consent agenda. These were just taken up in committees just a little bit ago. Happy to pull any of these out if there's any further discussion. Otherwise, I'll look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Schmidt. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Our next item is related to the fire, what will hopefully be the new fire station property, a 2020 comprehensive plan change and a zoning change. So Jim's going to take us through those.
Thank you. So on August 5th, the Plan Commission held a public hearing for both items. The first one is for the actual land use change, going from commercial to institutional, and also a small section of multifamily to institutional. The zoning itself went from the commercial, B4 commercial, to the I-1, and also from the RM3 to the I-1. This is actually to facilitate the construction of the fire station. This better aligns the zoning with the use for the fire station along with its other uses that are proposed for their training centers and their storages for the equipment that they have. So we're asking council tonight to endorse two ordinances, one for the zoning amendment, or I'm sorry, one for the land use amendment, and then one for the zoning amendment. And if you note, we do have two zoning, or two acreages that are different. This is how we zone. The difference is the land use does the parcel, and the zoning does all the way up to the right-ofways, or the center of the right-ofways. So that's why there's two separate acreages for that.
Okay. We'll take these items separately. The first one is ordinance number eight to amend the 2020 comprehensive plan for the property located at 2151 West Washington, approximately 12.9 acres. The change is in the recommended land use from commercial multifamily and wetland to an I-1, which is institutional and public service district. I will entertain a motion on that recommended land use change.
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderwoman Sizer. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. The next one is the same address. It's more acreage. It's 21.15 acres, and this is the rezoning from B4 General Business and Warehousing District, RM3 multifamily. And this is the rezoning from B4 General Business and Warehousing District, RM3 Multifamily Residential and Nonshoreland Wetland District to the I-1 Institutional and Public Service and Nonshoreland Wetland District. Again, the rezoning of that property.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Sternig. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to our reports tonight. Our Plan Commission met on August 5th, 2025. Matt, are you doing that one?
I, I can. Alderman Sparts, would you prefer that I handle it since I'm in the room?
Go for it.
Perfect. Sounds good. We had a number of item agendas on our meeting. The first one was a conditional use permit for a personal training studio as a major home occupation. The second, third, fourth, and I think fifth were the comprehensive plan. Zoning amendment, reviewing and improving the certified survey map and the site plan for the fire department. Two of those items we just acted on moments ago. There was also a site plan for improvements to the Washington County Justice Center, located at 432 East Washington Street by Washington County. And then we had an extraterritorial survey, certified survey map off of Oak Road on the town of Trenton. And then the last item we took up was an annexation of approximately 158.99 acres east side of River Road between Decorah and Sand Drive. That was the extent of our meeting.
Great. Thank you. There's a bid board report from August 7th. I don't know if Rhett is able to give us that report. Rhett, if you can hear us. If not, we can push that to our next council meeting. How about Parks and Rec Commission from August 14th? Alderwoman Sizer?
Okay, Park, Rec and Forestry, August 14th. That was last Thursday. We started at four o'clock with about roughly a two hour tour to review a number of sites throughout West Bend. First stop was Regner and the Aqua Park, which was busy and picture postcard perfect that afternoon. It has been a great success this summer. Sales in June and July last year were 77,200. Sales this June and July were 149,750 dollars in person and an additional pre-sold ticket amount in the amount of 73,000 for a total of 222,750. So roughly three times the amount last year. That is not pure profit, of course, but it's a reflection of the success of the Aqua Park. Note, many slots were sold out ahead of time. About 75% of the ticket sales are online versus about 25% in person. So the moral of that story, if you want to enjoy the Aqua Park, it's a great idea to buy those tickets in advance next year so you're not disappointed. The Aqua Park closed yesterday, August 17th, and they will start cleaning the equipment and packing it away for next year. Our tour continued as we visited Glacier Blue Hills. It's a very busy park, which desperately needs parking lot work. We also visited Munk, Munk, Munk Neighborhood Play Lot. That's 30-year-plus year-old play equipment needs to be replaced. And the park needs to be renovated to be AD accessible. So that's on plans for the future. We stopped at Rolfs Dog Park, beautiful, busy park, which is planning to expand and whose barn needs a new roof. And finally, a visit to the newly renovated White Family Cabin at Ridge Run, which is just beautiful. If you haven't seen it, stop in and visit. Huge thank you to all the private donors and the friends groups who play such a big role in the success of many of these projects. Then after a little lunch, which was very graciously supplied for all of us, the regular meeting convened at the Regner Park Camp Lodge at about 6:30. A list of planned and potential projects for 2025 through 2030 was presented with four very detailed pages of large and small projects, along with funding sources and estimated budgets. While many will have to come out of the capital budget, many others will rely on donations and/or grant money. The operating budget and the five-year capital projects plan was also presented for review. One very necessary piece is a long-term park and open space plan, so we have a view of where we're going in the future. Ryan reviewed the rec department program fees for fall. The majority will see little or no change in cost. There was a proposal for a mural at Lac Loran painted by Jeff Skomsky. Basically four panels representing wildlife in the wetlands, meadows and woods. That proposal was approved. It's expected to be about a $900 project and will be funded by donations to the nature playground. The nature playground at Lac Loran is progressing. A few weeks ago, the West Bend Sunrise Rotarians planted 300 perennials and a ribbon cutting is planned for six o'clock on September 24th. Finally, the entire staff and city team was thanked for their efforts after the flooding on August 10th. A huge thank you to everyone who jumped in early Sunday morning and just kept working through the next couple of days. Everyone went above and beyond the call of duty for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Sizer. The Joint Review Board met this morning to discuss TID number 18. The packet for the, that includes the planning documents and project plan is in the Joint Review Board meeting on our website if you're curious to look at that. Just as a reminder, you did see that on August 4th. This all started back on July 1st. The Joint Review Board met, forwarded the idea of TID number 18 to the Plan Commission. There was a public hearing held. Plan Commission forwarded it to the council. Council gave a thumbs up. The last step was the Joint Review Board's final approval, which happened this morning. So TID number 18 was created this morning. This is on southwest of Rusko and River Road and southeast of Rusko and Main Street. Is roughly the boundaries of this multi-use TID district. So John Fellow stands ready to answer any questions that you may have or questions you get from residents on that. Feel free to reach out to him. And again, the documents are on, posted on our website. That's it for reports tonight. We'll move on to our administrator report.
Alrighty, thank you very much, everybody. As I close out day six. Wow. I guess I would like to speak a bit to staff's efforts with regards to the flood, the rain event and the flood response. I'm going to keep this at a departmental level as being the new guy, either A, I don't want to miss any specific names or worse, mispronounce specific names. But with regards to the city's response to this significant, almost one of a kind type of rain event, it's been nothing short but of an all hands on deck response. Whether it's Public Works, Utility, Park, Rec and Forestry out there in the field, protecting public infrastructure, cleaning public infrastructure, maintaining, you know, travel ways, what have you. Police Department, Fire Department, from a public safety aspect, have been engaged from the absolute beginning. Community development and their staff, engineering as well, with regards to reviewing records, getting out there on the street to speak with impacted residents face to face, to do this surveying work, which is vastly and vitally important to our community because it is that survey work helping to delineate the amount of damage that our community incurred. Trying to put a value to that because that is how eligibility for state and federal funds is established by doing that survey work and reporting up. At, at a local level here in the city, we report up to the county, who in turn reports up to the state, who in turn reports up to the federal level. And all of that establishes the potential for aid. With that being said, I am utterly amazed at staff's efforts. And I truly appreciate everything they have done. Not only in the course of their normal job duties, but also trying to break in and orientate a brand new administrator, but then also the above and beyond work of this tragic rain event that has impacted our community. To all of the residents that we have spoken to or who we may have not spoken to, but all of those impacted thoughts go out to you. Wish you the best as you move forward as we, we do understand and respect that it is a very difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our administrator? All right, he's in the office. He's working. Last week was a hectic week, very busy week, and I'm sure this week will feel the same. But in the blink of an eye here, it'll be Christmas and you'll be settled in and just like that. All right, any alderperson reports tonight?
Just want to reiterate what Jesse said and Mary Beth as well. There were a number of people that I went out to visit that had been impacted by the floods and they did notice the city's response. So thanks to all those folks that were out there and it was all hands on deck. Some of my constituents were visited by the police department. They were wondering why the police department was there. Well, there was, everybody was busy. So thank you for that.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I also would like to reiterate thanks to the city staff for the work they did. And all those times are hard and it's on a weekend. And I also want to thank the Parks Department for the maple wine playground build on last Saturday. It went very well. We did a lot of work. We had a good turnout. We had several volunteers that came out and helped and we were done about one o'clock. So it was a good afternoon, good morning, a lot of work done. And then, then the rain started. So Parks Department especially put in a lot of extra time that day. So thank you again.
Thanks, John. Anyone else? Couple of things I'll mention. We had two big events over this past weekend and the weekend before. The first one was the cash bash put on by the West Bend Chamber of Commerce. They've been doing it for several years. That event draws in people from Minnesota, Iowa, Illinois, Michigan. It's amazing to see the different license plates that are in the parking lot for that geocaching event. We become the geocaching capital of the nation that particular weekend. And that was just a great event, very well, well done by the chamber. They got a little bit of rain on Saturday afternoon that kind of put a damper on the very ending of the ceremony of the awards and things, but otherwise it was great. The last one was just, the ended yesterday, the Chalk Fest at Moa. Again, another event that brings in tons of people from outside of the community. They had a little bit of rain on Saturday night. They were able to cover up, you know, the artwork. And I, I was out there yesterday and the artwork was absolutely beautiful. So those two organizations, good partners with the city and bringing in people from outside our community is, is always a great thing. And of course, it's German Fest Week, another event put on by Habitat for Humanity. Summer's not over yet. We still got some fun happen, fun things happening. So German Fest will be out at Regner Park. When does it start? Does it start Tuesday? Thursday? Starts Thursday, runs through Sunday and brings in a ton of people from all over this area. So hope to see you out at German Fest. That's all I've got. Any other announcements for the good of the order here? If not, we will be adjourned and our next meeting is in September. So we'll see you in September. All right, we're adjourned. Thanks. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order a special meeting of the common council of the city of West Bend. It is Monday, August 18th, 2025. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting. Notice of the time, place, date and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin state statutes. We do have a full quorum of our, a full quorum of our council here tonight. We have two gentlemen who are not in the room, but they are online. And I'm told that they can see us on the cameras here. They have microphones. They can talk if they want to speak up. And so that's Alderman Rhett Engelking and Alderman John Sparts. So all eight of our council members are here. I'd like to introduce our new city administrator. This is Jesse Theis. He started a week ago today. And so this is his first night of common council and committee meetings and things like that. So a warm welcome to Jesse. I'll let you get your meeting kicked off here too.
Chairman Jeff Schleif will call this meeting of the Executive Committee to Order, Monday, August 18th. Similarly, our meeting was noticed by our clerk's office over 24 hours in advance in appropriate movement. So I want to have a pledge of allegiance.
Sure, why don't you, I invite you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thanks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got four microphones on the table. I think they're all on with the green light being on and they're very sensitive. So you don't have to be super close to them. But our, our agendas are identical to one another. And so our, our topic tonight is, is the future of the University of Wisconsin Milwaukee, University of Wisconsin Milwaukee, Washington County Campus Building and Property. So that's our discussion item tonight. I'm going to say a discussion item again. We will not have action, at least we won't. I can't speak for your group tonight, but our council will not have any action on this item tonight. Just discussion on our part, so.
We may have action if felt appropriate.
Okay, very good. So County Executive, you've probably got the most history on, on this property and things. Why don't we turn it over to you and
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Chairman. Just a quick recap, and I will try to be succinct with this. Many of you have been involved since the very start. But this is, I think we should note, another historic day. Again, I think I mentioned it at the Q and A for some of you who are there. Second meeting of the Executive Committee and City Council in a long, long time. We'll just say it that way. So thank you all for doing this and having this conversation, being so collaborative. You remember about a year ago, we met at UWWC's campus in that auditorium style room and discussed the future of the building and the property after the UW decided to pull out a few months earlier and finally effectuated that, that evacuation in, by June 30th of last year, 2024. We, we just had mostly a brainstorming session, you may recall, including framing of this idea of having a community center, social capital is a phrase, phraseology that I used, trying to keep the education intention, that open space, so to speak, for the community to gather intact. If you remember that conversation, there was some skepticism, maybe is, maybe a bit strong of a word, but questions about, is it sustainable? Is it viable? Can we actually accomplish it? We talked about different potential opportunities of different county functions that could potentially be out there and nonprofits as well. Over the course of the last year since that meeting, I think the consensus of the meeting was, well, let's go see what's possible before we jump in headfirst and, and see if we can't pull this thing off. And you'll, you probably, many of you recall a large emphasis on the term anchor tenant. I kept using that phrase over the last probably 14 months at this point, trying to find one organization that could help pay the bulk of the costs to keep things up and running. I mentioned at that time that the annual operating cost was somewhere between 300, 500,000 dollars per year, plus, plus about the same in annual capital outlay expenses. Things like water heaters and rooftop units and parking lots and things of that nature. Currently, from an operational budget standpoint, the county is covering that 300-plus thousand dollars per year in operation costs. As you can imagine, although the building is not quite mothballed, it's basically non-functioning. But we still have to keep electricity going to the building and, and the utilities working and so forth. As well as there's some, some maintenance in terms of mowing lawns and, and keeping things at least semi-plowed. While people aren't not, so that people aren't vandalizing, things of that nature. In addition, we do have currently in our capital improvement budget for, including for the next several years, that capital outlay expense that I mentioned a moment ago. So all of those things are still, still there and are, and are on the county's dime, so to speak. It was mentioned at the Q and A session the other night, but I want to reemphasize the agreement between the city and county back in 2016. And, and it's the reason that I talked about the county fronting the cost for all of these different things. That arrangement between the city and county as of 2016 basically has a hands-off approach for the city. You're 26% owners from a city council perspective. The county has 74% ownership. But the city's ownership is largely silent aside from major changes, which is why we're sitting here today together again. So the, in the last year, we've So, in the last year, we've investigated a laundry list of options, we established a task force to try and winnow through a number of those different scenarios. You can imagine there's a laundry list of nonprofit organizations in the community who historically have used the building, who are interested in potentially using the building, some have come and gone over the last 12 months. But really, when you boil everything down to the work that the task force did, they came forward with a few pages worth of recommendations, including some amendments towards the end. But there's really just about two or three, depending on how you look at it, interested entities who would help to be able to basically keep the facility viable, to cover that operational cost. The county is now currently in the process, probably similar to the city, of doing our budget. The county's budget process is a biennial budget process, so we are walking into the next two years knowing we need to find a tenant who can cover the operating costs of those facilities. In the past, when the UW was in those buildings, we were informed that it cost them about $1 million a year in operational upkeep. You know, once you have folks in the building, then you're also talking janitors and maintenance people and all the additional expenses. So, the county has taken all of that on, but we are now in the process of getting our budget ready, but at current state. So, there are a few things that I think are worth talking about. First and foremost, if we are to pursue the social capital type concept, there's really only one proposal that semi-fits into having an anchor tenant and then being able to build out additional nonprofit organizations, some of the community groups that some of you, many of you actually are on boards or have volunteered for. That entity is Excel Education, they are a national nonprofit charter school. They have offered, they have a rough letter of interest, like all of the entities that we have talked to, that indicates somewhere in the $700,000 to $800,000 a year lease, so to speak. That would cover all of the operational expenses as well as the bulk of the capital outlay expenses. There are no other proposals to lease any of the property that have enough capital tied to them or enough cash tied to them to make the social capital idea work. Everything else is, there's a number of good, nice ideas that would benefit the community, no doubt, but there are no dollars to go with them to be able to actually cover the corresponding costs. It is worth noting that the school districts have been in constant conversation, basically since the start of the last meeting that we had. I had at one point even been in weekly communication with the superintendent of the West Bend School District, talking about and brainstorming different ideas and concepts. In fact, at the January meeting of our county's Executive Committee, Superintendent Wimmer explained kind of a whole laundry list of different ideas that might work, including talking about moving some things in as soon as, I think it was February, at that January meeting. None of those have been able to come to fruition, and the ones that have been documented in a letter of interest from the school districts collectively, all, none of them have any dollars connected to them, and all of them at the end of that letter of interest are provisional, meaning three to five years out before any kind of execution could be followed up on. That's probably the second and maybe most public policy interesting proposal. The last proposal is probably the other that, aside from Excel, fits the bill but in a different way. So, Ozaki Christian School is expanding in Washington County and has been for the last couple of years. When we've started this process over a year ago, I had talked to leadership at Ozaki Christian. I know leadership at the city had talked to private developers and other parochial schools. I had also talked to the local Catholic schools and then subsequently a Catholic charter school about potentially using the building. None of those worked out in the end, but in the last couple of months, Ozaki Christian School had been working towards the acquisition of property to the east or their existing facility. For those of you who maybe don't know, they own the old strip club just north of West Bend Lakes Golf Course. The property immediately to the east, they have acquired and had plans, even some rough renderings for a major expansion and a major building project to happen there, including projects that will probably go into the eight to nine figures over the course of many years in different phases. So, they were in the process of doing that expansion. In that same process of due diligence, we had a follow-up conversation about the building that we have, which obviously was built as an educational institution. And so, they have multiple options at play right now, including the possibility of purchasing the building, the UW C building and immediate surrounding property. Simultaneously, and they are mutually exclusive to one another, but they do work together from my point of view, the Cedar Lake Conservation Foundation has indicated interest in purchasing and protecting the land, basically entirely encompassing and sort of a horseshoe the building itself. And so, we're talking about roughly 60 acres of land around the building, including a fen and a lot of the kettle moraine that abuts Ridge Run Park as well as the Girl Scout camp to the south. When you look at these two proposals, Ozaki Christian School has put forward a $3 million purchase offer for the building, the parking lots around it, and then some park space to be negotiated, certainly including the soccer fields, but potentially some additional opportunity for expansion. And then the land around it, basically their proposal says, anything that CLCF would buy around them, that would be a discount from the $3 million. So, when I said at the Q and A session, for those of you who are there, combine those things are $3 million, that's why I phrased it that way, because Ozaki Christian School's letter of interest is framed in such a way. The balance of, so you'll recall, as we've gone through this process, the city and the county worked together to identify an appraiser to appraise the property. The county paid for that appraisal, the city forwarded their appraisal service that you guys use, it sounds like, and the appraisal price for the property at large came in at $5 million with the existing school use and the existing zoning. So, where we are at in whole and in sum with this proposal from Ozaki Christian in combination, I assume with CLCF, if you were to pursue that, is we also have an additional $2 million at play here with the state of Wisconsin. The state, following the budget process last year, allocated $2 million grants to all of the campuses that closed, but specifically named a number of counties, including Washington County, as a beneficiary, since we were one of the first campuses to close. So, that $2 million will help offset really any number of things that's eligible for basically preparing the property for whatever its next steps are, whatever the future looks like. Under this proposal, what I would be suggesting and recommending is those dollars go to offset a significant electrical upgrade that we talked about a year ago, we still have not done, because we knew that if none of this came to fruition, it's likely that the building would be torn down, and that was, as you might recall, one of the conversations a year ago. So, in whole, those proposals collectively present a $5 million, essentially a full appraisal option for the city and the county to contemplate. The reason I added up that way is because the county has allocated 1.6 million plus a number of the expenses I laid out to you before that equal that $2 million amount. This would essentially reimburse us, so to speak, and allow those dollars to go back to our general fund. So, that is the gist of the proposal. Some of you were at the Q and A session last week with the mayor and I, others I know weren't able to make it, but I will just say, I feel like it's really unfortunate that this has turned into, frankly, something that's just unfortunately political, like a public school versus a voucher school fight. It's not that in any way, shape, or form. We've been having conversations with the public school districts all throughout this process, trying to find different ways for, whether it was the charter or Ozaki Christian or the public schools, to be able to work together. The public schools' proposals just haven't worked out and aren't timely. We are now a year into a building with nobody in it. If we continue to wait, my fear is we will be close to two years of a building with nobody in it, and we will be facing the same demise as many of the other counties are talking about right now, which was tearing down a building and reutilizing it for some other purpose, which I don't think anybody wants. I think the building's best use, as we talked about a year ago, was to have some sort of educational use, and so my recommendation is to sell it to Ozaki Christian School and the adjoining land to CLCF and negotiate it accordingly. And so, what I further would suggest is that as part of that, the county and the city formulate an agreement that has a 74/26 share of whatever those proceeds are, and I'm happy to take any questions or explain that further if you're interested. So, with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Mayor.
A lot of information there. Are there any thoughts, questions?
This is Rhett, can you hear me?
Rhett, let me have... No, he can go ahead.
Go ahead, Rhett, we can hear you.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know I was talking over somebody. I was curious, how was the original availability to purchase or rent publicized? I mean, how did you get to the, was this an open thing or was this you going out and finding, kind of going out and finding a couple people independently? How was the availability, I guess, announced to some degree? That we'd settled on these two, Excel and Ozaki Christian School?
There was a long process of it. It wasn't a traditional government RFP process, but the last meeting of this joint body was widely publicized. We had a number of letter of interests, and as I mentioned, a lot of beating of the bushes, so to speak, that occurred. It's why we have, I think in the end, eight or nine different nonprofits and civic groups that have put forward different proposals. The Excel Schools' proposal actually kind of landed in our lap. The proposals that actually aren't in front of you or aren't in the document that the task force investigated were conversations with universities that are near us. I personally spoke with the president of Wisconsin Lutheran College, I know John Torinis personally spoke and met with Concordia. We also jointly went with Scott Hinky, who was the chairman of the task force, to Lakeland University. So, we really tried to find any and every interested party, and as I mentioned earlier, I think the city even walked through multiple private developers, as well as, I know there's at least one other school who's been walked through. So, it was very well talked about, at least in the newspaper, albeit not a traditional government RFP process.
And I would add that, well, maybe non-traditional, when 80 acres of that kind of land with those types of facilities are announced to be vacated, it's kind of an announcement that they become available, correct?
Yes, and I'm sure that's why we got the National Charter knocking on our door. I'm sure they heard it nationally.
Yeah. Getting back to my original point, just as finance chair, there's a lot of numbers that have been thrown out. When we talk about potentially looking at an agreement where there's a 74/26 split in the proceeds, is that proceeds, what I'm trying to get to is understanding, is the $2 million going to be deducted from that? So, we're talking about a $3 million sale price, and that's the net that we're looking to divide, or because the county has already allocated funds for the repairs and maintenance that needs to be done, is that going to be covered by the county and then this money or that money that would go into the general fund be part of a $5 million sale, which becomes the net proceeds, that is the appraised value of the facility, the land and building, that would then be divided in that 74/24? Really oversimplifying it, right? But trying to understand, are we talking about a 74/26 of three or 74/26 of five?
I'm open to either. I'm most interested in getting use out of the facility and hopefully striking an agreement that can benefit both the city and the county and keeps that building used for decades to come. So, I'm certainly open to either. Clearly, the county has $2 million into the building, if you will, over the course of the last year, and that $2 million will help reimburse us, but if it's going to help make it happen, I'm certainly open to talking about that.
Supervisor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That was my exact question, and I knew you were going to. And I concur with the county executive. I am a City of West Bend supervisor, so to me, the City of West Bend receiving a little bit more is a good thing, and I'm willing to negotiate that. I thought these were sensitive. Okay, so I am a West Bend county supervisor, so I look at it as a little bit more money going to the city is actually a good thing, and hopefully it'll be put to good use. We did allocate this money, geez, it's got to be almost two years ago now, for these electrical repairs, and when you sell a property, you need to make sure that that property's in good saleable shape. So, I look at it as kind of a cost to do business, and like I said, to work this out and to get a good deal, I think this is definitely worth it, and so I would definitely go along with it. Thank you.
An additional question, and you might have covered off on this, Josh. In the most recent conversations that you've had with Superintendent Wimmer and/or the conglomerate of superintendents from the county, how would you characterize their A, interest level, and B, forward-looking feasibility of whatever vision that they might have for that property?
So, I would first suggest you go and watch the video from January. The superintendent was very thorough in different ideas that she put forth, and then it got complicated at the end because there were a number of newer superintendents who kind of backed away when school boards started getting phone calls from people saying the school boards hadn't talked about this. So, I'm not quite sure where the districts are at large, but the last page of their letter of interest, which every entity who wanted to utilize the facility had to submit, has this five-year plan. Year one, establish an advisory committee, secure initial funding and finalize programs. Year two to three, so that would be like starting this year. Year two to three, expand student enrollment, develop internship partnerships, and evaluate program impact. And year four to five, establish long-term sustainability model, assess community impact, and expand offerings. So, what I understood was, it's really not until you get to year three to five when you actually have something that can have any kind of reimbursement or can, that's why I said there really aren't any dollars that are attached, and obviously with the school boards not weighing in, there couldn't be.
Fair enough, thank you.
I got a question. You don't need to move that over. I got it. I got a lot of votes. Is there any chance if OCS purchases a building, that they'd be willing also to work with the local school districts? You think there'd be that chance? I mean, this building is very large, and if they don't fill it out, they might need to do something, right?
There's a chance, again, I mean, I don't want to speak for them, but it's a 200,000 square foot facility. Every proposal that we had, including the charter school, was talking about using a third of it or less to start with. So, you know, you look at some of the large, some of the schools in this county, even moderate-sized schools, they're not 200,000 square feet. This is a big, big... This is a big, big building. There's some opportunity for partnership, and that's certainly something we'll be talking about.
Awesome. Thank you.
Well, that's my concern. I'm concerned about OCS and its size. They're roughly, they're roughly what, 150 students or so? How can they fill that building and maintain it and afford it? You know, looking at the finances from what I've read, they would be hard-pressed to take out a $3 million loan. Is there a way they could be part of an anchor and use part of the facility and have the rest of the facility be a community center, daycare, theater, open to the public for meetings, things like that, and have them use half the building? I'm afraid they're not going to make it. And then, then what? Then we're stuck. We've lost the building, and we've lost a great opportunity to do more in our community.
So, two things. One, that was the, what you just described was the original approach, when I approached them a year ago, and they weren't interested, so much so that they bought property adjacent. We're talking about building, I think, a $15 million or so building. I might be a little bit off on that number, but it can't be by much. And so they, they're, they're in process. They just brought land, they have the ability to, and are pursuing, building a brand-new facility for three times, five times the purchase price that we're talking about. The, I think, so that is their proposal. I've asked for what you've described. All of the proposals that we got won't fit the bill, or at least won't fit what, exactly what we decided or designed initially. So I think, maybe to answer your question in a different way, the county has different properties that we own together with other places, and that has changed over time. But Threshold, the Threshold Building on Rose Avenue, that has what I think what's called a reversionary interest. Brad's in here somewhere, you can correct me if I'm wrong. That's right, reversionary interest. In other words, if the threshold pulls out of that building, it reverts back to the county. We have a similar agreement, although different, with the school district, with Fair Park School. That land is actually on county land, and it can be used for nothing other than education, which of course is an interesting twist to all of this in the middle of the referendum process and Fair Park School being closed. And then third, Carl's Place was done something similar. That was not, that was not a reversionary interest. Was it a reversionary interest at Carl's Place?
To be used for nonprofit purposes.
Yeah, to be used for nonprofit purposes, with us having basically a sign-off. So we could do something similar, we could negotiate something similar, where if, if, similar to Threshold, they pulled out, that it comes back to us if we want that. I guess that's a, that would be the type of thing that I would suggest and recommend. Both bodies push to the executive administrative branches to try and negotiate out and finalize. But I think there are protections we could put in place, so in the, to prevent the worst-case scenario.
Similar to that question, maybe you covered this, so I apologize, but has it been considered whether to, are these schools only interested in wholesale purchase or leasing agreements or things like that, discussed or alternate ways of getting access to the building for the purposes, but, you know, not necessarily retaining full ownership of the facility?
OCS is interested in purchasing outright. I mean, again, another thing we could try to negotiate is some kind of, some kind of use agreement between the county and the, and OCS, or the county and the city of OCS. The cleanest path to accomplish what, what the alderwoman mentioned earlier is the proposal that Excel gave us. I mean, that would do exactly what you're describing. I know that's even more controversial for some people in the community, but it would cover all of our costs and would allow for two-thirds of the building to still be used for other things. So there's a path to do that, if that's what this group wants. Given the totality of all of the proposals, I just feel like at this point, we're better off just selling to OCS and trying to negotiate some kind of reversionary interest and/or a community use of some sort, if we can.
Supervisor Schwab?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the impassioned speeches I heard the other night about doing something with this building that would serve the community, and I respect that. And at the same time, I represent part of the county that isn't that close to that campus. And it's my responsibility, and it's the responsibility of many members on the county board, to do what's best for their constituents and for the rest of the county, not just the area within three to six miles around that campus. And so as we look what's, what's best and what's possible, I'm looking for the best option for the taxpayers of Washington County, and for the best viable option. And there are a lot of great ideas about things to do, but in the end, those ideas have to have dollars attached to pay the true value of that building. And so as we're looking at this, yeah, I want it to be the best possible use, but I want it to be a timely use as well. And as we look at the schools in the area, people are concerned about whether or not Ozaki Christian has the funds to do this. I think what a lot of people who aren't involved with parochial schools don't realize is that those parents are very committed, those organizations are very committed to their mission and to their students, and to their school. You look at Living Word, you look at Kettle, Moraine, Lutheran, you look at the other parochial schools in the county, they're thriving. And it's not because of the, the public funding, but it's because of the commitment of the organizers and the commitment of the parents who send their kids there. And there was, there was stuff mentioned the other night about, concerned about tolerance. You know what? I've been to a lot of public schools as well and public organizations where there hasn't been tolerance for my beliefs either. As we go forward, we need to do what's best for the taxpayers of Washington County. And in my mind, it looks like the best way to do that, the best way to serve the taxpayers is to allow Ozaki Christian to use the building. And as we look at the other parochial schools in the area, there are often occasions when their gymnasiums, when their auditoriums are used by other community groups. Can we force them to rent out to whoever? No, maybe not. But most of those groups are reasonable, and most of those groups are interested, if they can pick up a fee for leasing out or renting out a space, they're willing to do that. They're part of our community as well. And so as we go forward, I'm interested in hearing the first, best opportunity to put that building to good use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As County Executive Showman has talked about, we're all in the middle of our budgets. And this morning, we had our land use and planning budget, which was pretty, pretty wild, lots of stuff to go over. I want to talk to you about one of the superstars we have. His name is Aaron Dahl. I call him our head bean counter, okay? He's an amazing young man, and I really wish you could get to know him because he's done some wonderful work for Washington County. When we got a tough situation, Aaron's the guy who will come in and figure it out. And so him and I had a little sidebar after the meeting, just kind of, you know, talking friendly. And I said, "Aaron, I got to do what's best for the taxpayers." I said, "If I wrote a scenario where we have this institution, if I said that somebody's going to come in and buy this institution and use it in the way that it was intended, that it's already zoned for, that it was created for, and who's going to take care of the land, preserve the land, and open it up to the people, and preserve the watershed for Silver Lake," I said, "Write me a better scenario. Write me that accountant dream scenario." And he said, "I can't." That is the dream scenario. For the people and for this situation, we just, we just drew a full royal flush. You can't do any better than this. And I would really implore you, this is the right thing for the taxpayers and for the community. Thank you.
I'll add that we on the county board and the executive committee have been watching this and agonizing over it for a year now. And like Supervisor Kelling said, we have a willing buyer, kind of a perfect situation. It'd be nice if the money was a little bit more, but it works out. So I'm all for selling. And I've talked to a lot of my constituents, like Supervisor Schwab. I live down in Germantown. I'm a long ways away from West Bend. There's a lot of emotion with keeping it for the citizens of West Bend, but that doesn't go for everyone in the county. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I too have heard, I'm in the southern part of Washington County, and I too have heard from constituents via email, received about a dozen or 15 emails, and a good majority of them have said, "Please support selling to Ozaki Christian School." So I echo your comments. Thank you.
John?
Yeah, go ahead, John. I've been, can Josh reiterate with the $2 million from the state, what the plans are for that? I know what's kind of, I know he said the 1.6 million for the repairs. What about the remainder? What would happen with that?
The, the $2 million from the state will basically reimburse the, the costs of the, it's an electrical upgrade that probably at this point, frankly, is going to be more than 1.6 million, because that was two years ago that we put that money away. So chances are that $2 million's going to completely get, get absorbed, fixing that rat-infested electrical situation we've got. And then the 1.6 will go back to the general fund of the county, which I think is where Alderman Sternig's question came from.
Right. Okay, good, thank you. Also, the second part of that, Fond du Lac apparently has done some stuff with their campus. Has anybody looked at that and at that plan? I know it's Fond du Lac and a little different campus. I understand they're separate buildings, probably been a little easier to manage. Any ideas on how that went, or what they did with that, and the background behind it?
I can speak to it a little bit, and I know the chairman has talked with the Fond du Lac County Board Chair as well. I've talked to the county executive up there about it a couple of different times. They do have multiple buildings on the campus. Basically, they had five different uses. They're interested in doing a combination of county offices and other government offices, event centers, law enforcement, or I should say, public safety, training facilities. Obviously, they have a gym and those things too, so they would have sports complexes and theater venue for that type of thing. But basically, 80% of what they're proposing is government-funded somehow, including they took older buildings that are county-owned, and I believe they're in the process of shutting those down and selling them and moving that to the, to the UW campus. So everything was within their, kind of their existing organizational footprint, albeit a different location. So there is some, there is some community contribution beyond property taxes, but it's, it's heavily reliant on government funding of some, in some way, shape, or form.
And they're a totally different situation. They have a bunch of buildings. We have one huge one, so it doesn't lend itself to different uses as well.
Yeah, one thing to keep in mind on that note is Fond du Lac's campus is, is almost completely integrated with Moraine Park Technical College's main campus. You literally walk out the back door of Moraine Park and you walk into UW, and then you walk out of UW and into some soccer fields, and from there, right into the public high school. I mean, it's not quite that seamless, but it's pretty darned close. So it, it is like basically one giant educational footprint, K-12 through, through upper or higher ed. So it, it is different in a number of ways. Unlike ours, of course, is immediately adjacent to Ridge Run Park in the heart of the Kettle, Moraine, next to Girl Scout Camp and the interstate. And we're talking one building versus multiple buildings. Real quickly, Josh, we got the proposal from OCS, we have the proposal for Excel, which was a rental-lease situation. Any of the public school district conversation, was there any mention to any sort of compensation, buying, leasing? Was there any numbers attached to that at all? There never, there never was anything formal. The closest we got, at one point, we were talking about having some alternative ed. These, these are students who are, think of high-end special needs that stay past the age of 18, like making a regional hub to be able to do that. There was first a nonprofit group that the school districts work with that we engaged, and then when they showed no interest, then we engaged CESA six and CESA one, and when they both turned it down, that kind of evaporated. That was the closest to having any significant funding. Everything else that we were talking about was kind of pulling on straws for different, including at the end, there was some, some chatter about putting together a public charter school through West Bend School District specifically, you know, which of course would have been a voucher of a different kind, it's open enrollment. So there was never anything, even to the bitter end, that was formal proposals. It was at best years out and very prospective.
Actually, in one of the task force meetings, when pressed for saying how much area West Bend schools might take, the superintendent said perhaps 5,000 square feet in five years. That's about 2% of the property.
I think that's actually in there. I'll look, I'll look and let you know if it is. away, but I can, I can kind of, oh, go ahead, please.
I'll come back to the money again. I admit I'm still confused about that. Now, we get $2 million from the state.
Yes.
Okay, and in the meantime, the county's using that for maintenance and everything you have to do, or that's what you will use to cover your maintenance. So basically, Ozaki Christian is buying the building for $3 million, but it's been assessed at $25 per square foot, which comes to roughly $5 million. So I'm still confused as to why Ozaki Christian isn't paying us $5 million.
So the, the county has $1.6 million set aside for the project. We've spent another, probably close to half a million dollars in upkeep just this past year, and anything more would basically be duplicating it into the next year. That's how, that's what I'm saying, when the, the county is the only one eligible for the $2 million. The city couldn't apply, it's county-only. So that $2 million will reimburse us. When we started this process a year ago, there was nothing for us. That, that came after the fact. So I look at that as contributing to the, this whole sum of the value of the property, which was the legislature's initial intent. The balance of the $3 million is simply some combination of CLCF and OCS. It may be, CLCF can't come to any kind of agreement with OCS, and OCS pays for the full 80 acres with the balance of the $3 million, or it can be a combination of the two and it's still $3 million. So from my vantage point, of the two and it's still three million. So, from my vantage point, there's $5 million coming in the door. The appraisal price was $5 million for the whole property. It wasn't, there was, I don't recall any square foot analysis, but there, maybe there was.
I have it if you need it, but yeah.
Okay. The, a lot of the property that CLCF is, is interested in is valuable in a way other than money. It might be the nicest, nice way to say it. It's geologically very unique and special, and its location is such that I think we would all want to see it protected, but probably from a financial standpoint, isn't worth a lot. And so, there, whatever they spend will offset what, what OCS has proposed. And that's how OCS made their proposal. So, I, you can look at it, anybody can look at it however they wish. I look at it as there's $5 million coming in the door that a year ago when we were sitting here, it wasn't coming in the door if we accept these proposals. And there's no, there's no other serious offer unless we're interested in leasing to the, to the XL Education Group.
I had an additional question. The, all the other school, private schools in the area were mentioned, and I guess a question I have is, so Ozaki Christian School moves in there with their current enrollment. I, it's, it's much too large for that enrollment, so I would think that they would be anticipating more students. And I guess my question is, where do those students coming from? And does that present a competition or a problem for some of our, our local schools, like losing enrollment and, and I guess, financial assistance based on enrollment?
Well, I, I mean, first of all, I'm not sure that's the venue of either one of these bodies that are meeting, but it is, it is a practical reality, and I'm quite confident that's why the school groups and the superintendents have spent so much time and energy trying to find an alternative and to basically box out XL, XL schools and OCS. I'm sure that's the real motivation. It seems pretty obvious to me. It's not anybody at this table's fault that we find ourselves in this situation. I think it's easy in hindsight to look and say, you know, this should have gone differently or something different should have happened, but frankly, the UW abandoned us. They signed an agreement sixty years ago saying they were going to do this. They walked away from it with basically no notice. We only got notice because we started investigating, what are we going to do when they leave? Because we know they're leaving even though they're not telling anybody. And mark my words, in the next five years, all of these two years are going to close. I mean, Jay Rothman's already telegraphing it when, when he said, "If I don't get my full 800 million, you're going to see two-year campuses close." So, I, you know, it's easy to point fingers and blame, but the reality is, it's not our fault that the funding formula sucks. It's not our fault that vouchers and public school system is built the way it's built, and it's not our fault that the UW bailed on us and left us holding the bag for, at a minimum, $600,000 a year operating expense. I mean, I don't know about you and on the city, but we can't absorb a $600,000 operating expense, especially when we just got the shaft in the state budget. So, this is really going to boil down to either we accept one of these proposals. I think it's, it's been very, very clear from a lot of people that they're concerned about a number of them, but in the end, we can't afford to keep the building the way it is. We can't afford to hold on to the property. So, this really boils down to, are we going to accept the best offer? We probably would have envisioned a year ago, quite frankly, or are we going to snub it? And quite honestly, at that point, we are probably talking about turning the building down, because we can't sit for another year like this.
I can address the city's financial aspects a little bit. If we could absorb $600,000, we haven't been paying a dime towards this building since 2016. It was brought up during the Q and A that, you know, during the floods last weekend, wouldn't it be nice if we would have had a community center where people could go and support one another? And I agree, yeah, it would be nice to have a community center. But what I really needed during that flood was three more DPW workers. And let me explain. We're down three people in DPW right now, because if we pay 22 bucks an hour, Slinger Place pays 23, and then Germantown pays 24, and all of a sudden, we're down three people. And we can't afford to, it's a wage war out there in DPW. That's what I needed during that flood last weekend, was three DPW workers. And by the way, we're still down three DPW workers. Our women's locker room in this building floods every time it rains. We can't afford to fix it. The roof over at our Parks and Rec Department needs to be fixed. We hired nine new firefighters two years ago using a safer grant that's good for three years, and we have to figure out a way to keep those nine new firefighters in three years. We have a wood chipper out there that's been operating on a hope and a prayer for the past five years. And if people like bringing their wood and their debris to our yard so that we mulch it up, we need to figure something out there. I'm trying to just illustrate, oh, wait a minute. I forgot the most important one. $700,000 a year could fix a road. Could fix a road in our community. That's, public safety's number one, but fixing a road is right up there at number two. I'm just trying to illustrate the priorities in our budget. And again, we haven't been paying a dime towards this building since 2016, and we cannot afford. If, if the county would like to turn this into a community center, and we can remain a 26% silent partner, I am all for it. Wouldn't that, I mean, seriously, yes, it would be nice. I love our public school district. I think their idea and their proposal is wonderful. And if, if the school superintendents are so confident in it, which I hope they are, I think it's a great proposal, there's a building about two blocks away from here, Decorum Elementary School, that's going to be closed down in two years that can be used for that. Fair Park Elementary School, I know we haven't gotten to talking about that property much, maybe that's our community center. That's a building that's at least a size that's, that's workable. There's a gym in there, you know, there's, there's spaces that could easily be remodeled in that building. But I'm, I'm just telling you from the city's perspective, we don't have the money, and we haven't since 2016, to put any money into this, into this facility. I, I don't like XL Charter School. That's a for-profit, out-of-state charter school. I'm not in favor of them coming here. Ozaki Christian School is already here. They're already a part of our community. And I made the comment to you several times. I mean, I don't, I don't know the answer to this, but would it be any different if it was Holy Angels or Cabrini or St. John's that was looking at this building? Ozaki Christian School should be listed amongst all those other ones, Good Shepherd and so forth. They're already, the people who attend those schools, they live in our community or surrounding communities. Our school, our public school district is absolutely wonderful. I send my kids there, and I wouldn't change that for the world. And I think our public school district needs to keep their heads down, keep doing good things, and they won't have issues with enrollment. I understand that's, that's a concern, and declining enrollment stinks, but our public school district, we keep our heads down and keep doing good things. Our community just invested tens of millions of dollars in a referendum for our public schools. Hundred, hundred million dollars. And they will continue to do great things. The building itself, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, but it cannot, if we continue to own it and try to piecemeal, it, it's not going to be a revenue generator. If we tell all those theater groups that they can use the theater, but then we turn around and tell them that it's going to, you got to pay $20,000 to use the theater for two months, well, they can't afford that. The senior center, I'm on the board of the senior center, yeah, we would love to get out of our location and use the library that's in this building. We pay $1,800 a month in rent in the location we're at now, and then if we turn around and say, well, now it's going to be eight grand, well, that, you know, that, that ain't going to work. I just, I don't see the financials coming together unless, like you, like you said, Executive, unless you have that anchor tenant, which we've had since 1967, and it stinks that they left, but we don't have anyone who's going to be willing to come and pay $800,000 a year to be that anchor tenant. You know, we can sit on this forever if we want to wait and try to find that anchor tenant, or you sell the building, or if we want this to remain in community hands, tear it down. Tear it down. And we can jointly own that land, maybe work with CLCF to put in some trails and a frisbee golf course or something like that. If we truly want this to stay in, in our hands, then tear it down. And, and those are our options. You either sit here and wait and see if we can find the anchor tenant. You can accept a, a sale. If we're not happy with $3 million, then let's, let's wait, see if there's other offers that can come in, or tear it down. But I'm just telling you, from our standpoint, I don't have the money to put into this building.
Supervisor Kelling?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I would build upon what Mayor Anger has stated and add on a couple of things. One, we can't wait. The, the budget hole that we're already looking at, from what I'm seeing so far with the county, we can't afford to keep this building going with all of our other constraints that we're facing right now. So, that would be almost literally impossible. And what people tend to forget, well, if you tear it down, you eliminate, no, no, no. You know how much it costs to tear down a building like that? Millions. You know, who's got it? We don't. You don't. You know, that's one thing we can certainly agree on. We're not sitting around on piles of money either. And we have our, definitely our shortcomings when it's coming to this new budget coming up. So, really, to me, the only viable option here is to unload this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, for saying that so eloquently. And I'll just end this way. I also was a school board president in Hartford Union High School. I love public schools. My, my oldest son graduated from public school. My youngest son goes to parochial school. There were only, for whoever was on the phone, there are only three parochial schools listed. I think there's something like thirty in this county. Most of them are K-8, but there's also, there's another high school, St. Augustine, down in Richfield area. There, there's many of them. Like, I think, I think Joel is 100% correct. The solution to our decline in enrollment and having less kids in this community, and the solution to school, schooling in general, is not to pit one against another. You're not going to build public schools up by tearing parochial schools down. It's, we have to grow the community, and we're trying to do that. The joint review board just met today. I heard the mayor talking about it as I came in. We have to try to bring more young families into this community, and the city's doing its work with the, the new Newman Development on the southwest side of town, and whoever it is that's going to go off of County Highway P and Rusko Road. And the county is working with the task force with the city on trying to do something with our existing land from Manitou all the way up to Regalware. So, that, we, let's build, try to build more. I mean, that should be really the goal, is get more kids. If there's more kids and a growing enrollment, this is less of an issue for everybody. Public, private, charter, voucher, everybody. That's, that's, I hope, what our focus could be after this is over. Together.
Our agenda talked about possible action. Do I have a motion from our executive board?
I move that we direct staff to...
I would move that we direct the county executive and his staff to continue negotiating with Ozaki Christian for the purpose of executing a sale.
We have a motion in a second.
Mr. Chairman, the, the only change I seek is that that be a recommendation to the county board, because I believe, Brad, correct me if I'm wrong, the county board is the one who would have to be the one to make that formal approval, correct?
Thank you. I would accept that friendly amendment.
And if need be, I'll second that one, too.
Do we also wish to add the proviso that if West Bend wants us to buy them out, we can proceed that way? Would that be part of the negotiation?
I think the, what I envisioned as negotiation was the county executive and his staff handling the complete, you know, bringing a complete package to the county board for consideration. We don't, it doesn't make sense in my mind for the county board or the executive committee to go back and forth and drag this on another six months or eight months. And I would expect that the prospective buyer would be interested in, in getting going as quickly as possible as well. Strike while the iron's hot and move on, in my mind.
Any further discussion? We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I will reiterate that, you know, we're the minority owner here, 26%. Probably, you know, process-wise, I'll, I'll defer to our attorney and your attorney to make sure this, you know, is handled. I, if you want us to have any sort of seat at the table as it relates to negotiations and things, I, again, would probably defer to our attorney and, and, you know, to you, Josh, and I guess I'll leave it at that. I mean, I, I don't know that we have much say in this, being the 26% owner in the deal. I don't know if there's a possibility of trying to work with the potential buyer on any sort of a promise of allowing us to use the facility. For instance, the city has run our volleyball program out of the gym over the years. Yeah, I'm sure theater groups would love to use the theater. I don't know if you can negotiate an MOU into their purchase or not, if that's even legal, if that ties too many hands or what. I don't know if anyone from the potential buyers organization is here tonight, but I hope that they heard tonight and during the Q and A last week, that the community has loved this building and used this building and would love to continue to use the building. So, if that can just be reiterated to the, to the potential buyer, I'd appreciate that.
It's a big building, and I think they want to be a good neighbor, so I would hope that they would be amenable of that.
Supervisor Kelling? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, and I've been in customer service and sales for 42 years. So, and it seems to me that if I were Ozaki Christian School, and if I were purchasing this building, a building that certainly is very large, they're getting, compared to building a new building, I think it's also a pretty good deal for them as well. I think this works for all parties. And, and if I were them, it would certainly, they want to be a good neighbor. They took a strip club and made it into something great, you know, and I think that's a good neighbor. And, and certainly, I, I, I would put any amount of money on the fact that they would want to work with the community. They want to be a part of this community. They want to buy in and invest in this community. So, I have no doubt in my mind that they would absolutely want to try and work with, with the theater groups and things like that. It, it just, to me, is an open brainer. Thank you.
Hi, Mike.
Yeah, I just want to, before you take action on the motion, I would just like to say that the Ceres Conservation Foundation is interested in serving the fourth of the property that we discussed, regardless of what happens with OCS. So, in your motion, I don't see an opportunity for the county or the city to sell the property for conservation to CLCF without also selling the property to OCS. And I would ask that the county have an attitude, and the city have an attitude, to sell that property to CLCF, regardless of what resulted in negotiations on it with OCS. So, I, I apologize for interrupting, but I thought it was for the heart sake that we put it up there.
Would we like to make that a thorough amendment?
I think it's something the county board can tackle.
The motion was to negotiate, and as the county executive and his staff work together with all parties, I'm certain the county executive would negotiate with all interested parties to do the best thing for the community.
And when, when we take the final decision, that the county board will certainly include that allowance in it. Any further discussion?
Any further discussion?
This meeting's adjourned.